Good evening. Good evening. It is 6 o'clock on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, and I am going to call to order the regularly scheduled City Council meeting for the City of Montrose. And if you will, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I ask the City Clerk to please take role?
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Ed Ulliberry. All Council members are present.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protim Reed, are there changes or any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mayor. We have one item, item number nine, Resolution 2023-13, that we would like to remove from consideration this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We will be removing that from the agenda. Next up is the Call for Public Comment. And this is, the Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when members of the community may publicly voice their concerns. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please stay on topic and limit comments to three minutes. Also be aware that neither City Council nor City staff are expected to engage in a discussion or debate. However, the city may respond when appropriate at a later time. Is there anyone here this evening that is here for public comment? Great. Then before I ask you to come forward, I'm going to read a little bit more legal language. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. So having said that, welcome. Please come forward, come up to the podium, and if you could tell us your name, and then either your address or subdivision, your neighborhood, that would be great.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'm Judy Bunyard, and I'm at 1664 Wetterhorn Street, Vista San Juan subdivision. I'm here representing the Fork and Trails Genealogical Society. Also here is Myrna Chyri seated beside me. Our organization, Fork and Trails, is a nonprofit that sponsors the Montrose Genealogy Center, which is located at 700 East Main Street. We have an extensive collection of Montrose City and County records and archives, and we currently do occupy about 800 square feet of that building. We've been at this location for 13 years. However, at this particular point in time, we are concerned about our building, it's also called Coronado Building, being more actively promoted for sale. It's always been for sale, but apparently currently it's being pushed harder. And so we are considering, we are concerned about the future of our genealogy center, whether it will be able to remain there or not. And our other concerns are whether we will be able to continue to manage the center as we, all our board members are getting on. We're looking for a permanent location for this valuable collection of materials. We would hope that the space could be available, and it would be available by the city, and that the city would view it as an asset in that it could be open to the public as a research center, and at least on an appointment basis. And our society could probably continue to be some assistance in that manner as far as research of these materials. For now, we do invite you to come visit and see what we have at 700 East Main Street, and we could talk with you further about what our need is and why we are asking for the city's help. There was an article in the Montrose Press last March 30th that described our facility very nicely. And we do wish to preserve these records. We don't want to see them thrown away because we have no place to put them. So I'm going to leave you a letter that has our contact information and says pretty much what I just said to you now, and a little flyer that has, with pictures. We figure pictures are worth 1,000 words. And I'd like to leave this with you, and hopefully you will take our organization into consideration, please.
Thank you. And you can leave those with the City Clerk, and she'll make sure we get copies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I think I saw another hand go up for public comment. Maybe, maybe not. Okay. If there's no other public comment for the non-agenda items, if you're here to make a comment on a specific item, then you can do that when we get to that item in our agenda tonight. Then we'll keep going with our agenda. Next up is the Consent Agenda, and we have four items on our consent agenda, and these are grouped together so that it's to be expedient with our time, and it takes one motion and vote on these. And these four items are: the Council Consideration of the Minutes from July 18th, 2023; Council Consideration of the Approval of a Special Events Alcohol Permit in Conjunction with the Closure of Apollo Road for the Funk Fest on August 12th and 13th; third, Council Consideration of an Application for a Special Events Alcohol Permit in Conjunction with the Closures of North Sixth Street, North Seventh Street, U Avenue, and Sealeague Avenue adjacent to La Raza Park for the Monte de Rosas Festival on August 19th; and lastly, City Council Consideration of the Disposal or Sale of Six Police Radios to the Olathe Police Department. So we could do one motion to approve all these together.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a first on the Consent Agenda. Doesn't say public comment, but we take public comment on anything, and even the Consent Agenda. So is there any comment on this? And the Consent Agenda and those four items pass unanimously. Next up is a Liquor License Change of Location. This is Council Consideration of an Application from Bliss Beauty Bar Company, LLC, doing business as Bliss Beauty Bar, to change the location of a Lodging and Entertainment Liquor License from 431 East Main Street to 1544 Oxbow Drive, Unit 156. And Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsey will tell us about this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before City Council is an application to change the location of Bliss Beauty Bar's Lodging and Entertainment Liquor License from 431 East Main Street to 1544 Oxbow Drive, Unit 156. This is a public inquiry for the change in location of the license. The permit is in order, and the fees have been paid. From City staff's review of the application, we have seen nothing that would prevent council from changing the location on this license, notwithstanding this inquiry. Council can make a decision at the end of the hearing or defer for up to 30 days. I believe we have the applicant via Zoom. Ms. Unrain, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Madam Mayor, do you wish, do you and the council wish to examine the petitioner at this time, or would you like me to ask some of the preliminary questions?
If you would please proceed with asking the questions.
Thank you. So Ms. Unrain, could you please tell us about the Bliss Beauty Bar?
It's a salon here in Montrose.
And you've had this license for a couple of years now, is that correct?
Yep.
Have you had any violations of the liquor license?
No, we haven't.
So how have you kept minors from purchasing alcohol from Bliss Beauty Bar?
IDing everybody.
Perfect. Have you personally taken the liquor law education and server training class?
I have.
Have all of your employees attended these trainings?
Yes.
And would you be willing to commit to the council that if the change in location is approved, that all new employees attend such training at the earliest availability after hire, if they're not already certified coming in?
Yep.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Madam Mayor, council, do you have any further questions?
Any further questions from council? It looks pretty straightforward. I do not see any additional questions. However, we do hold a hearing on these liquor license items. So I'll open a hearing. At this point, I would accept any public comment about this change in location. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the change of location of the Lodging and Entertainment Liquor License for Bliss Beauty Bar Company, LLC, doing business as Bliss Beauty Bar, to 1544 Oxbow Drive, Unit 156, as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, so please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2023-12. This is Council Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the City of Montrose Police Department to File a Victim Assistance Law Enforcement, or VALE, Grant Through the Seventh Judicial District Victims Assistance Board for the Total of $55,150 to Cover a Portion of Both the Current Victim Advocate Salary and a New Victim Advocate Salary, authorizing the Chief of Police to Act in Connection with the Application and to Provide Such Additional Information as Required, authorizing the City Manager, Chief of Police, and Finance Director to Sign the Grant Application and the Reporting Documents. Police Chief Hall.
Madam Mayor and City Council, yes, I come before you tonight with exactly what the mayor just read, and I know we've discussed this at work session. I come once a year with this same type of asking for permission for a grant proposal to the VALE Board. So happy to answer any questions, but Madam Mayor, you summed it up nicely.
I was just reading it. It's, yeah. Questions from council? We did talk about this at our work session previously. Okay, I don't see any questions from councils, so I would accept any public comment about the VALE grant. And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-12 as presented.
Second.
Great. We have a first and a second. Please vote.
It's not saving.
You can scroll up so you get to the save button.
Yeah, there it is.
That passes unanimously, and we'll go on to item 10 on our agenda tonight, Resolution 2023-14. This is Council Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a Private Activity Bond Allocation of the City of Montrose Pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. And I will turn this over to our Community Development Specialist, Chris Ottinger, who will remind us, we just talked about this, but give a little bit of an overview of what this means.
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. The item before you today is Consideration of a Resolution to Allocate the City of Montrose's Private Activity Bond Cap to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, as it has done for the past five years, for the benefit of the public. I will briefly explain what PABs are and how they work. A private activity bond is a special class of tax-exempt bonds that benefits private, non-government borrowers that can be issued by states, local governments such as Montrose or housing authorities. These state or local issuers are bound by very specific restrictions as to the use of the bonds and the compliance requirements related to these bonds. The benefit of the PABs are that the interest paid to the bondholders is exempt from the federal income tax, which generally results in a lower borrowing cost for the eligible project or a lower interest rate mortgage in the case of single-family bonds. A population-based formula establishes the maximum amount of PABs that a state can issue annually, which amount is referred to as a cap or volume cap. Currently, the formula is $120 per capita, which allows about $700 million in PAB volume cap for 2023. And it is important to recognize that the allocation of volume cap to a state or local issuer is only an authorization to issue bonds and has no cash value. Traditional components of a bond issue include a source of repayment, collateral and reserves, as well as eligible investors, are all required to utilize a PAB. In Colorado, PABs are administered by the Division of Housing, and 47% of the bond cap is allocated to municipalities and counties with a population higher than 19,048 people, and that's related to the per capita. Once assigned, local issuers can decide how to use the volume cap. They issue the bonds, assign the cap to another local issuer, assign to CHAFA, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, or do nothing and let it revert to the statewide balance. In 2022, the allocation for the City of Montrose was $1,125,667. In 2023, the allocation for the City of Montrose is $1,245,218. The City of Montrose has not desired to issue bonds directly, as there is risk and administrative burden doing so. Allocating the PAB directly to CHAFA allows our community to benefit from the PAB allocation without the city directly issuing bonds. Examples of PAB at work include, in 2020, CHAFA worked with the City of Montrose to use the city's PAB allocation to support Steel Properties LLC's rehabilitation of the San Juan Apartments, which serves seniors 62 and older, Section 8, and residents with disabilities. In 2021, the city, in 2021, CHAFA funded 20 loans in their single-family tax-exempt program, First Step, for a total of $5.3 million to the City of Montrose. In 2022, CHAFA also funded 17 loans totaling $4.5 million, a median income of $70,000 for a median loan amount of $268,000. The City staff this year again recommends that the City Council consider assigning our PAB allocation to CHAFA, and requests that CHAFA use the PAB if there is opportunity to support first-time homeownership investment, multifamily affordable housing project, or use it to support CHAFA's homeownership program known as First Step. If the City Council allocates PAB to CHAFA, CHAFA will ensure that the funding is used within the City of Montrose to benefit our community. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. That is to say, we take our roughly $1.2 million allocation, and instead of administering them ourselves, issuing bonds, we give them to CHAFA, who on our behalf does all the work, but in our community.
Correct. We make that distinction, that they have to use it here in our local area.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Then would accept public comment if anyone wants to comment on private activity bonds? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-14 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Moving on, the next item on our agenda tonight, item 11, is the Eldorado Financial Asbestos Abatement Assistance. This is Council Consideration of a Request from Eldorado Financial for $50,881.10 for Assistance with Asbestos Abatement in Conjunction with the Construction of a New Office Building. And City Manager Bill Bell will cover this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the packet is the letter describing the project. Eldorado Financial is looking at taking dilapidated property along kind of mid-Townsend area, tearing that down, demoing and removing all the debris, asbestos, and some soil that's contaminated in the area. Clean all that up and build a new building for not only their headquarters, to allow them to expand and grow with new employees, but also to add a few additional commercial office spaces. Important things to keep in mind for us is we have tried to be consistent as a city to help building business owners with things like asbestos mitigation, hazardous contamination removal, junk and debris removal, anything that will make our community look and feel better. And this application is along those lines. Other applications that are similar for the public's benefit are when we see facade grant applications, but those are really just to redo the exterior of a building and make the building itself look better. This one is more of a general property improvement situation, which is why we're seeing it tonight at City Council rather than at a DART board meeting as part of our Main Street program. So total project budget, as outlined in the letters, $2 million approximately for Eldorado Financial. The request of $50,881.10 is to cover the Extract Environmental Services Asbestos Abatement portion of the project. And I can answer any other questions you might have.
I think we've pretty well covered it.
I think we've pretty well covered that in work session.
Yeah, we talked about this at work session a little bit longer. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, you know, this is pretty typical. We've done this on several other buildings in the community also, so I think it falls very much in line with that.
Yeah, we've done very similar projects up and down Main Street and other places in the community.
I think I'd like to speak in opposition, the fact that we do have current city buildings that could use asbestos abatement, that we're giving money away to help another business that I'm sure that they have probably taken into consideration, at least they've done their due diligence on the whole process of the building, and I think that that $50,000 would probably be, in my opinion, better suited to help with the asbestos abatement of the new building that the city just acquired that we're going to have to abate in demolition, as well as the old city shop was built in the 60s, and I believe that there's some asbestos over there that city crews have been working with, and I'm just not comfortable to just keep on giving asbestos abatement money to private business, some that, especially one that, there's, the sales revenues and taxes wouldn't pay back the city. But that's just how I feel.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I would accept public comment on this item. Seeing none, would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, consider approval of the $50,881.10 for asbestos abatement for Eldorado Finance Office Building Project as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you. That passes a four-to-one vote. Next on our agenda, item 12, Ordinance 2634 on first reading. So all ordinance is required two readings. This is the first time we will read or vote on this item. This is Council Consideration of Ordinance 2634 on first reading, which is an ordinance of the city amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Section 1, and Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 21 regarding the removal of snow and/or ice and unreasonable noise. And I will turn this over to our Public Works Director, Jim Maschide, who is joined by some of his great team members.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take this one myself tonight. I guess first I'll start off by addressing, why are we talking about this in August and July? So we are updating our code related to snow removal and ice removal. It's formalizing responsibilities between the city and private property owners, and doing it now allows us time to get those notifications out prior to snow falling. We didn't want to do this mid-snow season to make sure contractors are aware of how to remove snow from private property and where to not put it in the right-of-way. So we reviewed this at work session, but I'll kind of give a brief overview. Generally, there's an ordinance obviously related to snow and ice removal. There's also a policy, and that's an internal operations policy that will be promulgated into our regulations manual as well, and that's done through the City Manager's office. But the ordinance is what council is considering. And the ordinance is related to, there's a redline version in the packet and then a final version, but the changes and additions are related to mostly depositing of snow in the right-of-way. And that, then that's what we are requiring is not to be allowed, because depositing snow in the right-of-way causes lots of problems with our storm sewer systems and ice buildup in the right-of-way, visual lines around corners and things like that. So that's why, the reasons behind requiring the snow is not deposited in the right-of-way. We work with a lot of contractors locally that do snow removal on larger scales, so they're clearing parking lots and things like that. We are working with them on where they can put it, where they should put it, and obviously where not to put it. And then again, the policy is explaining the city operations side of that and what the city is doing, the level of service that we are providing as a city operation. And what has changed in that that is, that's also bringing us forward is, we've transitioned a lot of our operations into the night or very early morning, and have missed some of the time that the contractors have been depositing snow in the roadway. And so now that we are transitioning our operations till earlier in the morning, some issues are occurring where contractors are installing, pushing snow into the right-of-way after we've already gone by. And so that's what's also bringing us forward at this time rather than five years ago. It's been an issue we've been dealing with, but now we're really starting to address the issue. Moving into early morning operations for us is a lot to do with safety for our crews and also for the public. Traffic has become more and more intense, and definitely by the morning rush of 7:00 a.m. By that time, we really like to have our Tier 1 and 2 routes cleared. We can do a better job, our level of service is higher, if we can get that done prior to traffic hitting roads, and also again, just safer for our crews and the public if we are done moving and picking up snow prior to that kind of morning rush. And so again, there is the redline version of what was added to the ordinance in the packet, and then also a final clean version. And I also included the policy in the packet as well, just for information on our operation. Also, some other documents in there regarding liquid pretreatment that we use, and also the state statute that also supports this ordinance. There is a state statute regarding not installing snow in the right-of-way, and it references local ordinances as well. So all that's in the packet for information purposes, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about that or anything that's come up since work session.
Council, does anyone have any comments or questions? Ms. Maschide?
No, I think we had a pretty robust discussion on one of those 99-degree days about snow. A nice relief. It was nice to know that what you're really saying is there's not any major changes coming, that the public will be like, oh, no, they're changing the law about snow removal, but we're putting into law our current best practices and making sure people know about it months before it snows.
Right. Yes. This has been a request and a notice for a long time. We are now making ordinance to those enforceable. When we have some that don't follow that request to not push their snow in the road, we have, the ordinance allows it to be enforced.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any public comment about our snow removal ordinance? Seeing none. See none. Oh, yeah, let's hold a hearing since we're making up new laws here. It's a good idea. I will hold a hearing and now accept comment. Thank you. And close the hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2634 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second, please vote. And wow, we got a lot of votes on that one. We are so excited about snow, just the thought of snow. That passes unanimously. Next is ordinance 2635 on first reading, and this is council consideration of an ordinance regarding the cable franchise agreement between the city of Montrose and Spectrum Pacific West LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications, Inc. City Attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. What you have before you today is the ordinance, which is the vehicle council would use to adopt the franchise itself. We discussed the franchise in considerable detail yesterday morning at the work session. This is the same agreement you saw then. As with last time, we have Mr. Ken Fellman appearing here remotely. I can see him on the Zoom, and I'm prepared, if necessary, to display the agreement on the big monitors if you'd like to see anything in particular or talk about it with me or with Ken. One thing I do need to point out, and Ken has not heard me say this, but I don't think it's going to be too big of a deal, our city clerk caught a typo in Exhibit A. She says the address for the Montrose Pavilion is 1800 Pavilion Drive, not 800 Pavilion Drive. So we got it wrong, we missed the number one in the address. So we will need to change that. It's on page 117 of the council's packets if you want to look at that. With that, I'm, et cetera.
Thank you. We did talk a lot about cable franchise agreement and and just yesterday, right? Wow. We talked a lot about about franchise agreements yesterday. Any further questions from council tonight before we take action on this?
I think, I believe between Mr. Morris and Mr. Fellman, we were provided very substantial information.
I would suggest that if any member of the public would like to dig deeper on this, that they can access our recordings or our work session, and that and they have a lot of information they provided for us. So if you're really curious about the nuts and bolts of franchise agreements, there's an opportunity to look into that.
You're absolutely right. And I ask that the documents that were handed out in regard to that discussion be attached retroactively to our work session packet yesterday, so that if someone was looking to dig deeper into this and wanted the full scope of information, they have the recording, as you say, and they have all the attachments right there that we talked about during that recording. So that's helpful. I will open up a hearing if there's no further questions from council. Okay, I will open a hearing. Opportunity for public comment, look at this. Please come forward, state your name and your address, neighborhood, or subdivision.
Madam Mayor, council members, Attorney Morris, Mr. Fellman, John Lee with Charter Communications on the senior manager for Government Affairs, and just want to thank the city, Ben and Ken, for the great work on this. This came together, I think, very quickly, very efficiently, and I think we're happy with the agreement, and we look forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Montrose. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I hope you say quickly, it seems like we've been talking about this for a really long time, so I guess everything's relative, right? Okay, any other public comment, or I will, otherwise I can go ahead and close this hearing, officially closing the hearing. Before we take our vote and move on, I want to I want to thank Ken Fellman for joining us yesterday for our work session and tonight for our council meeting and for providing the specialized legal knowledge that the city needed to get to this finish line. So thank you very much, Mr. Fellman. Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2635 on first reading as presented. Second.
And that passes unanimously, five to zero.
We only got to vote once on that.
Only got to vote once. Okay, moving on to item 14, which is ordinance 2636 on first reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of an interest in city-owned real estate pursuant to Section 1-9-2 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. This is a clear networks easement, and I will turn this over again to our city attorney, Ben Morris.
I think I can take this one.
Okay, then we'll go to Public Works Director.
If you'd like.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, as you said, this is for a deed of easement to clear networks for to run fiber underground. It's near the Black Canyon Golf Course, so there is a map in the in the packet showing the exact location, but it is, it's along the southern edge of the Black Canyon Golf Course, near the roundabout at Hillcrest and Sunnyside. The easement is on city property outside of the right of way, and it's also already encumbered by other easements, such as the Bureau of Rec Drainage Easement and a DMEA Electrical Power Easement. The location of the easement does not affect the golf course operations. It's again way on that southern edge along the fence line. And the installation of the fiber underground may require removal of some of the fence panels, but those obviously would be put back in after that's completed, and there'd be no effect to the operation of the golf course. We are recommending approval of this deed of easement, and if you have any questions, I could answer them.
Thank you. We talked about this for a while. We talked about all sorts of reasons that we would do it this way and why underground and why we've seen this and it's unusual and all that stuff at work session. So again, if you're watching City Council and you're really piqued by this, go back and check our work session because we really dug in, no pun intended. Okay. If there are no other questions.
I just wanted to ask a question. Ben, wasn't it, is it a requirement by FCC regulations now under the new that we handle it this way? I vaguely remember something through all that conversation we had about the FCC and the new regulations concerning internet order.
What you're talking about here is that we would not have a franchise agreement with a purveyor of fiber optic internet. Cable TV is different and it's regulated differently by the federal government. I think that's what you're referencing.
Right, okay, I'm just, I was kind of confused about that.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Excellent question. Mayor Bynum, I had passed along a paper copy of the ordinance. On first reading, the ordinance was written for an actual public hearing, but the agenda didn't mention that, so I wanted you to know.
We will have a formal hearing. I think the difference is the word and the gavel, I'm all for it. Good. Any other questions from council on this item? Okay, then then we will hold a hearing and accept public comment. See none, I'll close the hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass ordinance 2636 on first reading as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, our next item is item 15, ordinance 2630 on second reading. Again, every ordinance takes two votes of council to become law. The second reading is for an ordinance, this is council consideration of an ordinance updating Title I, Chapter 2, General Provisions, and Title I, Chapter 14, Municipal Court of the Official Code of the City of Montrose, repealing and replacing Title I, Chapter 2, Section 3, 1-2-3, regarding general penalty, repealing and replacing Title I, Chapter 14, Section 4, Print 1-14-4, regarding sentencing, and repealing and replacing other code provisions to standardize cross-references in the Official Code of the City of Montrose regarding sentencing. And it looks like Assistant City Attorney Matt Magriaro came to the dais, so you are going to take us through this one and tell us what all that meant? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, of course. Good evening. I'm here on a second reading on ordinance 2630. In general, this is to update our code provisions regarding sentencing in municipal court. This was discussed at a recorded work session held June 19th and a regular session for first reading held July 18th. We're passing unanimously. There's no changes made or to highlight to you tonight for once at bar. In general, in summary, the changes are to conform 1-2-3 and 1-14-4, the general sentencing provisions of the Montrose Municipal Court, to conform them to state law. And there's the other provisions are intended to be replaced and basically cross-reference the other two, so there's only two penalty sections in general left in the code to increase efficiency and also to the extent that future councils wish future changes, that's more easily done. And with that, I'll I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you. I think I really personally like seeing us clean these up and get rid of things that aren't lining up, and I really appreciate the fine-tooth comb with which you've gone through the code to make these kind of changes.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward then. I would accept public comment about this second reading. Okay, then would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2630 on second reading as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item 16, which is ordinance 2631, a second reading of an ordinance for the annexation of the Dry Cedar Creek II addition. And I will turn this over to our planner, William Reese. Actually, I won't, he's out of, he's he's on vacation. I'll turn it over to our planning manager, Jase Hawke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Will Reese is on a well-deserved vacation, and it's good to be back. I think this is my first presentation actually in front of you since I took off. I've got a presentation to share, and I'll I'll make it very brief. I know you all have seen this one a number of times, so let's.
Welcome back, by the way.
Your disciples are learning. There we go. Like I mentioned, yeah, this is really the the fourth and final time you'll see this. And I do want to mention that this item tracks with item number 17 with the annexation and zoning ordinance, so that's just something to keep in mind as I go through this pretty quickly. So what we're looking at is a 5.06 acre site that the applicant is looking to annex into the city limits. This is within the city's urban growth boundary, the City of Montrose Sewer Service Area, the city's water service area, and it's urbanizing in this general area. Adjacent to the west is the recently approved residences at Dry Cedar Creek that's actually under construction, that 60-unit apartment complex. Here's a zoning map of the subject site and the surrounding area. The applicant's requesting an R3A zone district for this property, which is intended to provide for single-family homes, duplexes, or and/or multifamily residences. The adjacent properties, zoned R3A there to the west, to the east, you see some county zoned properties that are, again, still within the county's jurisdiction. We brought this application to the Planning Commission on June 28th, where a unanimous recommendation of approval was had for the applicant's R3A request. This is the annexation plat map, nothing, no, really noteworthy here, you all saw this at the last meeting as well, just shows that the property is contiguous to city limits, both to the north and to the west. This is the comprehensive plan feature land use map. It does designate the area as residential mixed density low. That said, the area is changing, has been changing a little bit just over the last year to two years, and and so, you know, don't take that into full consideration tonight. I think, that being said, this does meet a number of comprehensive plan goals, and that includes infill and redevelopment, the site's well-served by utilities and infrastructure. It provides additional housing variety in the area, so you have multifamily residences, single-family duplexes, it really provides for that, which also provides for the possibility of an increase to affordable housing, which we know is much needed within the area. This just shows that the sites within Growth Area 1, which is really representative of the most cost-effective area to annex, quite frankly, it's well-served by utilities and infrastructure and is generally these areas that aren't annexed are kind of in enclaves and just have all services very close by, so this is really an ideal area for annexation. Just to summarize, the area is urbanizing, as I mentioned. It meets continuity requirements, that 1/6 state requirement. An annexation agreement has been completed, and the proposal is consistent with public health, safety and welfare, city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. As such, staff recommends approval of both ordinances 2631 and 2632. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Let's, your presentation is for two items, but now we're going to go forward and consider them separately because they are separate votes. So if we can first start with, does anyone have any questions about the annexation portion, which is the the first ordinance we're going to vote on for the second time? Okay, I will hold a public hearing, and this hearing is for any public comment for the annexation of Dry Cedar Creek II addition. Any comments? See none, I'll close that hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2631 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
And the annexation ordinance passes on second reading unanimously, so now we'll go to item 17, which is ordinance 2632, which is the ordinance for providing for the zoning of the Dry Cedar Creek II addition as an R3A medium-high-density district. Any questions from council on the zoning of the annexation or the parcel that we just annexed? See none, I'll go ahead and hold a public hearing. Any comments relative to the zoning of this parcel? See none, I'll close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2632 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Everyone hit save on their vote to make it count? Okay. How can your screen look funny?
I hit save. Yep, there it is.
Okay, and the zoning designation is passes unanimously on second reading. Okay, next up is item 18, ordinance 2633 on second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance designating the Methodist Episcopal Church, and I said that correctly, wait for it, we'll explain why, the Methodist Episcopal Church of Montrose at 19 South Park Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to. property pursuant to Section 11-3 of the official code of the City of Montrose. And Jace, are you going to also cover this one for the planning department?
I will, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can you start by explaining why we give it a weird name?
Yeah, I will say, this is William Reese's bread and butter, and he does an absolutely phenomenal job of these presentations, so I don't even want to try and butcher it.
Okay.
One thing I will say is there hasn't been any changes since you last heard this on first reading. This is a building that's both within the National and the State Historic Registered, or registered with both of those. So it seems very fitting to have it locally designated in this capacity, and again, I think William really crushed it out of the park last time around, so I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions, but I think that's about it for me.
Okay.
I think you did a fine job.
Thank you. He explained that throughout history, you know, I think people today call it the Methodist Church, but that it had a history that goes back where it was officially the Methodist Episcopal Church. And so it isn't a typo on our agenda. That's what it's officially called. Any questions from council to follow up on this? Okay, great, then I will hold a hearing and accept any public comment about this historic designation for a beautiful downtown building. Seeing none, close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt ordinance 2633 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on, item 19 is a fuel and oil contract award, and this is council consideration of an award of a contract to Parish Oil of Montrose to supply the city with bulk fuel and oil. Public Works Director Jim Shide is going to tell us about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Yeah, so this is for an award of a contract to Parish Oil. Our previous fuel and oil contract is set to expire this year, and so that actually was with Parish Oil for the last three years. They've been a great vendor to work with and very responsive, and great pricing as well. We issued an RFP for this service earlier this year. We received one complete proposal, and that was from Parish Oil. And the pricing within it was within what we expected to see and is very similar to what we're paying now. Fuel pricing as part of this RFP is based on a rack rate that we get pricing from throughout the country, and so we're able to recognize price decreases or increases as the market changes, so it's not a flat rate. We are, it's based on a market rack rate. And then Parish or any other proposer would have the opportunity to mark that rate up higher for their own profits, but in this case, they were very similar to what we've seen in the past. And so, again, nothing unusual here. This is similar as we saw three years ago and have had good experience over these past three years, so we're recommending award of this contract. This is a budgeted expense within our fleet internal fund, and we, with the current fuel prices, we don't anticipate that our budget will be exceeded by fuel this year, so.
Thank you very much, and we did talk a little bit about this. It seems like we had just done the contract, but we had made a change in the last year, but prior to that, we did have a three-year contract with Parish for the last three years.
That's right. Yep, we amended their contract about a year ago.
Thank you, yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I will, let's see, on this one, we're holding public comment, any public comment about our fuel and oil contract award. Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to award a contract to Parish Oil of Montrose, Colorado, to supply the city with bulk fuel and oil as presented.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously, so we'll move on to item 20, which is Cerise Park Storage Building Expense Authorization. This is council consideration of the authorization of the expenses for the construction of a storage building in Cerise Park near the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater in the amount of $183,574.72, including a contract with Stryker &amp; Company for the design and construction. Public Works Director Jim Shide.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So yeah, as you said, this is for a storage building near the Rotary Amphitheater. This is a pole barn style metal building, 24 by 48, be sectioned off into four different sections of the building. It have multiple uses because that area is becoming more and more active. There's a lot of different things going on down there. It'll be used by our police department for, you know, assisting with events and other patrols in the park system. It could be used for storing of temporary fence panels for large events, and also storage for event organizers. There's many different types of events that happen there, obviously, and a lot of nonprofits in town utilize the facility and would benefit from a storage area near the building. So we did issue an RFP for the design and construction of this structure as well. The design on this is relatively simple, as it's a pole barn style building. We've utilized this approach on other simple buildings like park restrooms and have had good success with that style. And actually, the last one we did was the North Connect Trail restroom, and Stryker was the contractor on that as well. So we've had good experience with this process and Stryker &amp; Company on this style of project. And in this case, we only received one proposal, and it was from Stryker. And again, we're comfortable working with them, especially on this type of project. If awarded now, the project would likely be completed in the spring of 2024, where we would order building materials immediately, but with the lead time on those, likely we would be in construction in the early springtime as the ground thows out in the area. And that would mean, I mean, construction of the building is relatively short, we're only looking at about a six-week time of construction, so actually, we should be completed with it well prior to event season. By the time we start kicking off events at the amphitheater, hopefully this building is completed by then. But it would likely split over two years of budget, and that brings me to the financial portion of the project, in that there is a portion of the project budgeted this year in the Police Department admin budget for $40,000. We will receive a donation from the Black Hand Rotary Club in the amount of $100,000 for the project, which actually originated as ARPA funding was given to the club originally from the city. I think we clarified that and explained some of that at work session in a little more detail. I think Bill does a better job of explaining that part if any more is needed there. But we may see a portion of the project budgeted in 2024 budget as well, even though the expense would likely be offset by the donation we'll receive. But since the project is spanning two years, we will see a budgeted item for that expense on both budget years. So with that, I can answer any questions, and if you have any questions more about the funding portion, I think Bill can help me on the ARPA portion of that.
Great, thank you very much. We did talk about it quite a bit in work session. Any follow-up questions from council, any new thoughts or ideas that you want to talk about on this? Okay, then I would accept any public comment on the Cerise Park Storage Building Expense Authorization. Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve expenses for the construction of a storage building in Cerise Park near the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater in the amount of $183,574.72, including a contract with Stryker &amp; Company for the design and construction as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, please vote. And that passes unanimously, 5-0. So we'll move on to the last item that we're going to be voting on tonight, which is item 21, flashing crosswalk signage expense authorization. You know, I'm really excited about this. I think this is one of those things that we've all on council heard folks say, we need better pedestrian crossing at specific intersections, and it's super exciting how we're going to go about it. This is council consideration of $61,100 in expenditures for the purchase of solar-powered flashing crosswalk equipment. And I was going to tell you all this more about it, but really, that's City Engineer Scott Murphy's job, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, no major changes since work session, but I'll give a quick overview for anybody joining fresh. Yeah, you're exactly right. So it's been a priority for the city to improve pedestrian safety and mobility throughout town. You combine that with a lot of the traffic growth we're seeing, it's something we really want to stay ahead of, to obviously promote safety and quality of life for people using our trail networks and such. So this would purchase four different sets of push-button activated flashing crosswalk beacons. So these are similar to the ones that are downtown. I think they're on Cascade Ceiling and Uncompagre right now, but the style is a little different. So they go in at existing crosswalks with the idea that they would just improve pedestrian, or improve driver yielding rates. Right now, you really catches their attention as you come by to try and, you know, say, hey, there's someone on the crosswalk, the crosswalk has the right of way. But they do differ from those style in that it's in the style of the beacon. So the beacons we're looking at, we researched a lot of different styles. Sounds like this is the best to catch people's attention, so instead of being around the perimeter of the sign like the ones that are downtown, these are kind of a concentrated block of beacons to get a more intense light to catch the driver's attention. The intersections we're looking at are Main Junction, where you have a lot of traffic kind of coming across between, you know, coffee trader on one side, felonies, pawn shop, and horsefly there. East Oak Grove at the Rio Grande Rec Trail Crossing, so this is the one near the southern end of the old Stover's Building, where you kind of get onto the old rail bed there and go down towards the river. That crossing is on a skew where Rio Grande turns to East Oak Grove there. Because of that skew, we see a lot lower yielding rates, and we'll angle those to, you know, catch the driver's attention. Chapita Road, this is technically, Chapita is technically a county road, but the rec trail is kind of a city-maintained asset, and a lot of our residents use it going to and from the southern end of the trail network or Cobble Creek neighborhood. That one's kind of unique, and it's a mid-block crossing. It's kind of out there out by itself. A lot of people don't anticipate pedestrians just popping out, so that's what's brought that one to the top of the list. And then Colorado Avenue and Rio Grande, there was one there, it's been unfunctional for a while. This will be a replacement for that one, that's the one by the Field House. And within the packet, there is a photo of what those new style look like. We budgeted $80,000 this year for that, so that does leave $19,000 approximately left over. We'll use that for installation. These will primarily, depending on availability, be installed by city crews. We may use some on-call support for some of the concrete work, but that should be plenty to cover the balance, so that should come in under budget. So, construction product under budget in 2023, that's an accomplishment. And yeah, happy to answer, any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I know the mayor said she was pretty excited about this, and I am too, but if you really want to get me even more excited, replace those ones on Main Street. Those, I drive that road quite a bit, and sometimes that light going around like this with the little trees next to them makes it a little more difficult to see sometimes.
I think we talked about how if this new style was a lot more effective, we could look at redoing some of the ones we took a first stab at and trying to do them over again if this worked, but I think we're, it'll be interesting to see if this is more effective, if it is easier for drivers to see.
Certainly, yep, yes, this gives us a chance to try both, see how the residents like them, see how we like them, how they hold up. Like anything, we implement on traffic, we collect data before and after to kind of see how they're doing, so we can use that to inform future purchases. And the nice part about the Main Street ones, they're all self-contained units, so, you know, maybe those, if turns out we like these better, that's not a lost cost or anything, those can get moved to an intersection that maybe has a lower volume or better visibility without tree issues or something that, you know, future changed out. Because they're, as you see, you know, between 15,000 to 20,000 apiece, so it's, they're no small expenditure, so I'll make sure we implement them effectively throughout.
I would imagine that when you identify that need and you go out shopping for the best type, that you look at a lot of different options, because I know, again, it's one of those things people talk to us about as much as anything else. I get emails with pictures of they saw some cool crosswalks somewhere in the world, and they think it should look like this. I would imagine you look at a lot of different options, and you figure out which ones are going to be the best fit for our community. Can you talk a little bit, just a little bit about that process, so people know you've looked at a lot of different options?
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks for bringing that up, because, yeah, we love to talk about this stuff. So yeah, the sky's the limit when it comes to crosswalk treatments. We work to standardize it, so it meets adoptable, defendable standards. So, you know, there is some weird stuff out there, like they paint these long 3D crosswalks that look like you're going to fall off the face of the earth if you go through it, and in doing that, it catches the driver's attention. Well, we don't want people to slam on the brakes thinking they're going to fall off the edge of the earth in Montrose, and it's not adopted by any kind of traffic standard. So, you know, we get some kind of unique ones like that that we consider, but don't implement for various reasons, mostly liability. And then there's other kind of in-between stuff, so, you know, embedded flashers in the streets. Some of those work a lot better in climates without ice and without snow removal, and some of the challenges that come with, once you lose that circuit, those are really high intensity maintenance. So we always try and find that sweet spot of, you know, not bleeding edge, not over-the-top, expensive to where we couldn't implement, you know, as many as we want to find that sweet spot of adopted standards that are defendable, because we want to make sure that if, you know, heaven forbid, something happened, we have, we've done it to a defendable standard and it was done right. But also, yeah, the economically feasible so we can do as many as possible, because we don't want to spend a whole bunch of money on one and completely ignore two or three others. So I think we're finding that sweet spot, and we resonate on that. And yeah, we've essentially researched and studied, and it's a lot, it's a big part of our job, because we get a lot of calls about these kind of requests, and we got to make sure that we can implement consistently, because everybody would want a flashing crosswalk on every crosswalk in town, and that's just not feasible economically. And so, yeah, again, trying to find that sweet spot, and we do spend a lot of time on them. If anybody has any questions, you can just Google City Engineer on the city's website, feel free to, if you have ideas of changes too, we're always open and always trying to improve, so feel free to call us anytime.
Perfect, thank you.
So if somebody goes through Crosswalks RS or Crosswalk Mart and sees something exciting, they can contact you about it?
Certainly, if, yeah, if it looks cheap, we give them a lot. Oh, these are only $2,000, yeah, they last a week, you know. When you start getting into commercial grade that it lasts, even, you know, those downtown ones, they were about $10,000 apiece, so you can see just this jump, you know, brings you up $5,000 to $7,000 apiece. And, yeah, and I guess one thing I forgot to mention too, we are also adding them as part of separate projects. On the new 6,700 extension, we have two crosswalks there.
Oh.
On the rec trail network and one near the schools. And then we're also adding one as part of the North Six Sidewalk Project, another mid-block crossing. Yeah, I forgot to mention those, they aren't covered under this authorization because they're covered elsewhere under other authorizations. But yeah, so we'll see a significantly large jump in these being implemented this year.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for that explanation too. I think that helps us give a good answer to people when they shoot us, here's one you could buy on Amazon, you know, you could do these everywhere, and yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I would accept public comment on the flashing crosswalk signage expense authorization. Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize $61,100 in expenditures for the purchase of solar-powered flashing crosswalk equipment as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, please vote. Well, briefly, I saw it. It was a 5-0 unanimous vote on authorizing the expense for those crosswalk things. I'm really excited to see those around our community. Okay, moving on, the next item, we move on after all the things we vote on. We finish our meeting with staff reports and city council comments, so I'll start with staff reports. Do any staff members have anything they want to update us on? Chief Hall, did I see you? And while you walk to the podium, let me say on behalf of all of council, because I think we all made it out, to National Night Out to visit with your officers. Is that what you were going to talk about? Am I taking your?
And then trap crane.
Okay, well, the National Night Out was going strong when we all came in here for our meeting. It looked like good attendance, and it was really great to see the staff from the Montrose Police Department out there, and the dogs, and all the kids. It was really cool.
Incredible attendance, actually. I just texted Commander Woody, it's still going and it's still going strong, so right after this, if you want to go for round two, please do. do. Also, just a reminder, today, we released the Theft Reduction and Prevention Grant. I think we've talked about that quite a bit, but that's using 2A funds to help support our local businesses to install security infrastructure. It is a competitive grant program application, the application process is now open and will close August 31st. So just a community reminder, that's all I have.
Okay, that, that's a great opportunity for businesses in our community to take advantage of some grant money to improve the security of their, of their business, and if they put a little bit of money in, the city will put even more in.
That's correct, if they, if they put in up to 2,500, the city will match that grant with another $2,500. So the initial grant offering is 2,500. If you put in 2,500 of your own, we will offer up, if you're accepted into the program, another 2,500, so 7,500 total between both entities. It's a lot of money to put in, some needed security improvements, you have to go through a crime prevention through environmental design analysis that our officers will provide free of charge, and whether you're going through the application process or not, just give us a call, we'd love to do that anyway, so.
Great.
All good stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other staff who want to make comments? Does someone want to talk about Montrose U, because I believe the application period for that is open now?
Okay, maybe I'll talk about Montrose University. I, I heard this morning that the application period is open for people who want to participate in the Montrose University program. It's a leadership program and a Montrose 101-type thing that meets once a month from the fall to next spring, and the applications and everything are on the Montrose, the City of Montrose website, if folks want to know more about that. I think quite a number of us have done the program and could tell you it's a great way to get to know a cohort of peers that you do the program with, but also learn a lot more about our community, so that's cool. Anything else from staff? Okay, and then we'll move on to, yeah.
I don't know why I'm so hoarse, but I'd just like to note that our planning manager was effective in helping to keep Montrose its rural.
Rural designation.
USDA.
Yes, and it was through his effort that we are continuing to be considered a rural community, and thus grants and, and other benefits to the city itself, we're going to keep them alive. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that, and certainly not a, a single-handed effort. We've got a staff member here, Chris Ottinger, who helped out tremendously, have a number of housing partners that we were in touch with on this. But yeah, at the end of the day, it helps us out from a city standpoint, but it helps the community out. This is a big deal as far as that designation goes in terms of grant funding and, and really keeping a lot of the programs alive, so we're, we're happy that that was retained.
Thank you.
If there are no other staff comments, I'll move on to any additional city council comments. You guys all thought this was going to take two hours, but here we go. I do want to make a comment, first off, Councilor Frank and I had the opportunity to attend the Montrose County Fair and to attend the Junior Livestock Auction on Saturday, and it was really great to see the youth in our community who have put a lot of hard work into raising their animals, and we have a few folks within the City of Montrose, city employees whose kids participated, and so I just want to give them a shout-out. Zachary Johnson works in, as a trash and recycle operator for the City of Montrose, and his daughter, Carly Brock, she participated and was awarded Grand Champion in the Market Beef category, so that's really impressive. Our deputy police chief, Tim Cox, his daughter Haley took first in her market class with her hog, and Grand Champion Intermediate Showmanship for showing hogs, and Grand Championship Cake Decorating in her class, multi-talented young woman. Daughter Mackenzie got third place and fifth place with her hogs and did well in showmanship with her hog, and Haley, I think that means Mackenzie, Mackenzie was also in the top 10 in the state in livestock judging. And Becky Scriffney with our Tax and Accounts Receivables Department, and I got the pleasure of sitting with her while she was so proud of her daughters. She has three daughters, Amy May and Sophia, and Amy took first in market for her weight class and was a reserve grand champion in beef showmanship. Daughter May was fourth in market for her weight class, and daughter Sophia, third in market for her weight class. And after sitting with her and sitting with the girl's uncle, John Zarke, who also works for the city, I kind of now know what that means, and we had a wonderful time, and thank you to TEI Rock Drills and you and your wife who purchased a steer and a hog at the, at the auction, it was really enjoyable, so my hat's off to those kids who work really hard. Any additional comments from council? Okay, then we will entertain a motion to be adjourned.
So I'll move.
We're adjourned.
We'll make a motion.
That's good, we're done, thank you.